Testing.
Testing.
Check in the community member here.
Testing.
Let's see.
Testing, testing.
Testing, testing. Hello?
Hello, can you hear us? Yes, it's working.
Good, alright. Alright, I guess what I should do then is just go through real quickly for the people who couldn't hear at home. I'll summarize, we have approved the meeting minutes, a couple corrections including spelling on Commissioner Proaxman and that excuse me about Mayor Hodges. So, that pretty much brings me, brings us to where we're at now, which is public comment. I do not see anyone in the audience of the comments, so we will move on. Unfinished business, I do not think we have any unfinished business on the agenda. Okay, so that brings us rolling right into new business. So the first item for new business is the capital program of general planning review. I think first off we'll let Nick kind of get us acquainted with the spreadsheet and make some general comments on what it is.
Sure, yes, thank you Vice Chair Bataki and members of the Planning Commission. So, for those of you that were on the Planning Commission two years ago, the former Assistant City Manager Rofe worked with the city and department heads to create the city's first formal capital improvement plan. And in front of you is a six-year capital improvement plan that was adopted by this body in the Planning Commission and then ultimately then adopted by the City Council. And so, what is a capital improvement plan for those that don't know? What it is, is it's charting a course for our city budget to try and set aside monies for future projects and plan ahead for, you know, money that we need to set aside. Now, a capital improvement plan is something that you want to use for obviously planning and, you know, having budget for, but also, you know, looking at future goals, aspiration, you know, and that's where, you know, if city budgets that are getting tighter every year with inflation and other cost factors, you know, it's good to set aside and understand where we are at that priority. So, what we did is we broke down our capital improvement plans into a couple different categories. We did buildings and facilities, equipment, IT or information technology, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, streets and sidewalks, vehicles, water distribution. And so, for tonight's purposes, what I wanted to do is show the Planning Commission community where we're at in the capital improvement plan. And I'll go through, you know, a couple of those to highlight and then what's going to be the path moving forward. So tonight's a review, see where we're at. And then the next couple of Planning Commission meetings, you know, what I'd like to do is actually bring to you new updates to the capital improvement plan. You know, new projects that have come about and priorities, you know, that have changed over the last two years. And so, you know, that'll be the next steps and hopefully after that, we'll be able to have an adopted plan by the Planning Commission, bring it to City Council. So then City Council has a updated capital improvement plan for the fiscal year 2027 budget, which will come up July 1 of 2026. And so, that's kind of what we're starting today with looking at, you know, the review where we're at and then, you know, we'll go for another six-year plan. So what we'll do is we'll add a fiscal year 2031 and a fiscal year 2032, which is going to happen. So, and bear with me, so please stop me if you have any questions because there is a lot to do with this. What we did is we listed by a project number, we got the programs as I discussed, what funding source, whether that was water sewer, City General Fund, was it, you know, recycling and waste fund, and then which department that fit into. And so, we tried to do as best as we could with the project names. And so, some of them may be understood for city staff, but you know, if you have any questions on, what is the paved crack egg lot, you know, be happy to help with that. So, what I did for color coding, the easiest one to start is blue. Blue means that it's been completed by the city. So, we'll start with fiscal year 2025. And I'm just going to rattle off a couple of bigger projects that the city did budget for and we did spend money on. And Commissioner Kozak, I know we were talking about four, but the leaf vacuum, for, you know, leaf that did get purchased. In fiscal year 2025, we also, you know, bought several public safety equipment, a police fighter radio, turnout gear, body and car camera replacement. We did a new city website and rec software in fiscal year 2025. And then some of the bigger projects, we did the sewer maintenance. That's been a quarter of a million that we've been budgeting for every single year. And we also have started, we started the sidewalk program. That was the first year that we started the sidewalks, so we're now in the second year of that sidewalk program. And then that's going to be, we have five districts in the city, so we'll be going through District 3, 4, and 5 in the next couple of years. And so, you can see we also have the road resurfacing program, public safety patrol vehicles, water main replacement, and so, and that was the beacons field over by Charlevoix, whatever it's called out here. And the deferred yellow, what that means is either the city, you know, did not have budget for or that it was, you know, moved, it's going to be moved to a different year based on price. So, as an example, on fiscal year 2025, if you look at the very bottom, you're going to see water meter replacement whole city. That actually is going to be incorporated into fiscal year 2026 with the capital improvement water sewer bond. That's going to be, City Council just voted on it at its last meeting to start the 45-day referendum. And not only the 1.5 million in water meters, but also close to three and a half million for sewer lining too, which is also going to be in fiscal year 2026. And that was originally budgeted for in fiscal year 2025. The city did not have enough budget to replace, you'll see this JCB backhoe number 59 in fiscal year 2025, so we're going to have to look for a budget for that one. And that does come out of the water sewer fund. And then, the city was not able to budget for pickleball courts. And so, that's going to have to be moved to a different year. And then, conceptually, the city's been discussing a cold storage building. And that cold storage building would be a facility over at Windmill Point Park that could house, you know, some of the salt, gravel, sand that's kind of in that back lot there. So, you know, we've been working with our public works department, not only to find funding, but as well, you know, look at that priority, so. Any questions on fiscal year 2025? I know I rattled off quite a bit, so please bear with me.
For the sidewalk replacement program?
Yes.
So that's done as a special assessment where residents are paying for that? So is this budgeted, but then essentially reimbursed back to the city or?
So, there's, the part that's in here is the city spent, so.
You guys, it's subsidized slightly then?
So, there's, so when we go to your home or your sidewalk, you know, there might be city responsibility that, you know, a tree.
Tree.
We budget for our portion and then you are special assessed, then what's your property there?
Okay, yep, thank you.
Pity that, they are similar questions, so things like the sanitary sewer maintenance, which was 4,000, which was done. That's the net if there are contributions from other parties to over the overall cost of that.
Yes, that's correct. So actually that one, I'm glad you brought that up because that was part of the, when this was first put in here, we were estimating that the project was going to be around maybe half a million, 400,000. And then, after review with Wayne County and their requirements, actually balloons of project almost double. So then, what the city was able to do was work with the Performing Arts Center because they're going to be a direct contributor, you know, with the system and partnered with them. Also to help St. Ambrose too with their, you know, right around the water, you know, sewer issues from the storms. And so, the city actually only spent 400,000 and then the Scott team actually spent close to 600,000. That was of their cost, that's not a re, you know, they're not asking for reimbursement back from the city, so that's money that they spent out of their own pocket. And we were able to get that sewer separation done this calendar year.
Okay. Are there any of the projects where it was a similar story where the actual payment significantly off versus the budgeted?
From everything that's in here, I guess let me look through fiscal year 2025 real quick, Commissioner Bataki, and see if there's anything that jumps out to me. The water main replacement has been around 1.3 million, that's, that has stayed pretty accurate. Give me one second while I look in here. The, I will say the backhoe in fiscal year 2025, that number is actually probably close to 225,000, but that was not spent.
Gotcha.
I saw that, that has increased, especially with, you know, supply chain issues. So as we budget for that in one of these other fiscal years. But what I can talk about, and this might be a little off topic, but if you don't mind, is, you know, when this capital improvement plan was done, we didn't account for the Charlevoix Street Gate project, which the Tifa, you know, put in, is putting in its own money, but then also got almost 1.8 million from the state of Michigan in the form of a grant, you know, for the street gate, which that street gate project is going to start in the spring of next year. We also did not account for receiving, and we did very thankfully, the TMF, which was the lead service line verification project. That's not lead service line replacement, that's just verifying the lead service lines that's required by the state of Michigan to multiple homes. And then, we also did not plan for, but we wanted to be proactive. On Charlevoix Street itself in the business district, there's no water main currently at all. And so, we actually added in this current fiscal year 2026, an additional about $700,000 spent on water mains. So we spent $2 million when we had budgeted 1.3 billion. Because, you know, we wanted to be smart and, you know, let's dig it up once instead of digging it up twice in property. And then, last but not least, we also did not realize we were going to get the congressional appropriation by Congressman Shree Thanadar for the EERV, which is the relief sewer over at Patterson Park.
Okay, so the water main replacements, the third one from the bottom, that fiscal year 2026.
That's correct.
That 1.3 was closer to?
Closer to two.
Okay, but it is covered by some state funds?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's sort of what I was getting at with the original question was, the ones that are annual, and to the extent that we have like two data points of annual cost. If they're running like significantly off, for example, the road resurfacing, if it's coming around 600,000 each year, that's, that's a good indicator that all the future years it's going to be.
In the vicinity of 600, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, we've been getting very competitive bids, I will say, since we've been, you know, going out for formal bids last three, four years. We've had multiple companies bid and got very favorable prices. And the workmanship's been good, especially having our engineers on site, so they're making sure that there's any issues with the road resurfacing. Because what we do right now is what's called a milling fill, so they'll shave off three inches of asphalt and then place three inches. But if the subsurface is in bad shape, then we have been doing that and starting to replace the concrete below. And then also budgeting for some curb and gutter replacement too. Okay, so, any other comments or questions on fiscal year 2025 at the moment? And if it, and if it comes back later, be happy to answer them, so. And then, I do want to note, I haven't highlighted this color yet, but pink or purple, depending on how you look at it, is in progress, so that's something that, you know, the city does have a budget or is looking to add into the budget. Which, the annual, I'll go from the bottom first in fiscal year 2026, annual preventative maintenance. That's, you know, gosh, what's the color, it's like tar, it's not tar, but it's a crack ceiling. So some crack ceiling and some potholes, you know, that need to be fixed, especially those areas in the alleys. And then, at the very top, you'll see Lavin Center HVAC. And so, originally when this was adopted, the higher priority was actually the Lavin Center HVAC unit. It was listed on here as the Tompkins tower roof. We do believe the Tompkins tower roof can still be good for a couple of years. We are going to have to place that back into the capital improvement plan, but based upon information we received from our facilities managers, the HVAC was a higher priority to address. And that controls the heating and cooling of Lavin Center, and so, that's why that name was changed. And then, I also want to note too in fiscal year 2026, if the deferred, you'll see the cold storage was deferred because we also deferred that in 2025 as we're trying to assess. The paving of the Beaumont and the cracked egg lot are being deferred because the city is working on a joint street gate project with the city of Detroit. And so, we are trying to, you know, preserve our funds and we did budget for this fiscal year 2026 monies for that street seat, which in Gross Point Park is just going to be at the traffic circle of Churchillville and Wayburn. And then going into Detroit, that's going to be to Ashland. And so, it's going to be, you know, new, new street trees, lights, sidewalk. And then, we'll actually have, we will have an updated traffic, an engineered traffic circle. And then, the city of Detroit's also going to have a traffic circle. So it's going to match harmoniously, so. We still do need to address those lots, but, you know, from a priority and, you know, moving fiscal years. That's why that's been deferred. The sewer jetter is a, at the time that it was adopted of this capital improvement plan, we looked at possibly financing this sewer jetter, which would have been in this water sewer bond I was talking about that City Council just approved. However, looking at the principal and interest rates, the length of the sewer jetter, we believe as administration, it makes more sense financially to, you know, in our water sewer reserves as we've been budgeting for, to buy it with cash rather than spending more principal and interest on that. So, that's why we've recommended deferment on there. And we still have about two or three years left on that sewer jetter. And then, we also, from a general fund, you can see in there that the mortgage book is something that's been deferred, but we'll have to, you know, certainly address for our public works team. And then, we also deferred the SCADA upgrades to the pump station, which we believe some of that actually might be able to be offset with EERV funding that we received from Congressman Thanadar, so that could actually change to a blue based on requirements that the HUD will let us. So, HUD is the administrator of this appropriation. And so, we have to contact them to ensure, you know, whatever reimbursements we can receive or money spent has to be directly involved to the EERV. So, you know, we believe we could make a case that the SCADA upgrades, which is the electrical panels and computer monitoring for our Jefferson sewer pump station, you know, are directly tied to Patterson Park, so we'll make that case then. We did ask Public Safety to assist us with, Public Safety Patrol Vehicles of deferring one year on that just based on some other budgets. We had purchased a truck and a Suburban the year before. And so, coming into next fiscal year 2027, we'll probably need to look at another one or two spot replacements. Other than that, that's kind of what I got right now for fiscal year 2026. And I'd be happy to address any of those questions or thoughts, or if you had anything on fiscal year 2025. Yes.
This is where Jen, so when do you plan on putting that back into the budget after, what fiscal year we did with that?
I was hoping to put that, you know, and again, I have to have City Council and Mayor approve it, but, you know, looking at possibly putting it in fiscal year 2027 or 2028. And then I do want to see if there's a possibility that we might be able to ask another Gross Point to assist us in purchasing that, maybe a joint purchase with Gross Point City, you know? Because as you see in the cost, it's almost 340 million dollars.
Yeah.
You know, both of our cities are doing, you know, the annual maintenance and so, it only makes sense. And so, I've been having several of those conversations with the city manager there. Not only that, but maybe other future capital equipment costs that you could share with Gross Point City or with the other Gross Points. Other questions?
It's very thorough, thank you, super answered most of my questions.
Yeah, same for me, I think I was curious on some of the sewer repairs and the water meter replacements, but it's sensitive, we're, you know, you're returning priority to make sure it's aligned with, once actually securing the bonds.
Yeah, so just straight up kind of housekeeping with the presentation.
Yes.
The fiscal year, I think you said starts July 1st, so fiscal year 2026, that's starting. And then, the total at the bottom is all the approved projects, including the road. So, that's not the actual?
That's not the actual spending, yep.
Okay. And to your knowledge, the two big ticket items that are kind of financing dependent, which were deferred because of financing issues. So the sanitary sewer and?
Water main, water meter, yep.
You're pretty confident those will both be completed in fiscal year 2026?
Yeah, so, from a timing standpoint, the city will secure, again, if everything goes through the legal process and that, we're probably going to receive funding in late January or early February. And then, the, from my understanding, talking to our engineers, we'll be able to complete all the sewer lining in, I'm going to say calendar year. It's probably not going to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. And same with the meter replacement, they'll start, you know, in February or March and that's going to take several months. So, that will bleed into, from the project standpoint, into fiscal year 2027.
Okay.
Mayor Hodges?
Thank you, City Manager, I speak. Vice Chairman Bataki?
You may.
City Manager, I know we elected to remove the, well, the ice ring, considerations for that. Have any of the decision-making variables that contributed to the decision to not update the chillers and that? Is that, have those caused any kind of rethinking on that that we should consider in this capital improvement plan? Or do we need to revisit that, given some of the public input that we've gotten in terms of whether or not it's a priority? And maybe that's more of a budget discussion?
I think that's a budget discussion, but something we can talk about and, you know, and if we were to put that in this, if this was a couple of years ago, we knew about the problems that were coming for us, we would have added into this CIP that, you know, it's going to cost us quarter of a million dollars, you know, or more for the new chillers. And then, again, we can prioritize this planning, you know, Planning Commission can view it, City Council can be a budget for it. So, you know, that's a conversation you definitely could have, should have now, but also a bunch of time to.
Yeah, I think the community is going to want to see that we've given that thoughtful consideration and just educate them as well on what that expenditure would be and is, how does that rank in the priority list? So I wanted to at least address that. And then just, I think you pretty much answered this question by stating that Charlevoix would be done with the Tifa. So can that be said that anything that would be funded by tax increments, whether it's the DDA or the Tifa, would not be included here? So if the DDA and its development plan update were to, you know, propose campus improvements here?
That's not.
That would not ever be included on a CIP, that would go within that development plan separate that way. Okay, just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anything there.
Correctly.
And then I know that we've got a Parks Master Plan process that's underway, should we set aside? I, I realize that that's far from complete, we, you know, but there's like, the likelihood that there will be some recommendations that come as a result of that. Would we just save that for next FY? Or do we need to at least do some set-asides now?
You know, the administration, we could, as the city administration, come up with some potential recommendations to add into the capital improvement plan. And then obviously, we're going to let the recreation plan play out, which, you know, that's going to probably, again, I don't want to say the wrong, you know, right date or wrong day, but, you know, it'll probably be completed in the spring, you know, if not really summer of next year. We could at least get ahead and get started with several other projects that we know have been deferred. Obviously, I did discuss the HVAC over at Lavin Center, which was addressed, but we also do have some other aging infrastructure over at our parks. You know, several years ago, the Patterson Park Playstate was, you know, talked about. The splash pad is getting quite old, that is something we are going to have to budget for. That is going to, you know, come in the bottom, its lifespan there. The boardwalk is also another discussion point, so there are several Parks and Rec CIPs that do need to be added into this plan. You know, I certainly hope that OHM and the Recreation Commission do discuss those and I imagine they will, but as, you know, I would recommend, we add several of those key critical points into the CIP that we know we are going to have to spend money on in the next several years.
And then the only other thing, I, I know oftentimes you see the community express concern that we've not invested in the alleys. And clearly we have, you know, we've got $150,000 allocated per year. And I think that's significant, you know, when you look relative in terms of an overall percentage. So, just wanted to make sure that the community is aware that we are investing $150,000 per year through FY 2030.
Can I make one point on that?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, one thing again for the community members and those here that you just sort of understand, we're as a community about 90% separated. What I mean by separated, meaning that sanitary and the sewer are not together. They are predominantly, 10% of those are in alleys in the city. There was a chunk of this Jefferson sewer separation that we did. We do have a section on Bishop and another section on Jefferson that are still combined. But, what the city has been doing, and our public works team was fantastic, they have reached their capacity of in-house separation that they can do, where they actually could rip up the alley, you know, separate the tie-in. And so, anything moving forward, we are going to have to, you know, contract that out for separation. And so, as part of the annual alley resurfacing, what we also need to look at doing is probably adding into the capital improvement plan an actual budget for alley sewer separation. And so, moving forward, any alleys that you see are going to be resurfaced, those are alleys that have been separated, but we do need to address more of that. So then we can spend more on alley resurfacing. And just as a government funding, Act 51, which is the monies that the municipalities receive for local and major roads, do not go to alleys. So, local, major streets, all the money we get from the state of Michigan, that all goes to Churchillville. That all goes to Churchill, Devonshire, Bishop, those streets. None of those can be spent on alleys. And so that's where we have to get creative. Obviously, we have a Rose Millage that did allow for us to spend that money into, um, uh, alleys. Otherwise, if we didn't have that road millage, we couldn't spend any dollars of Act fifty one. So, uh, I am very hopeful of those who are paying attention or to the city or Serenacity. The state budget, the state did approve additional funding for roads, which that's great news for us. It was about, we should receive next calendar year by the state of Michigan, an additional four hundred grand. Um, so why is that great? Well, that's great news because that means we can spend more on major and local. But that means too, that I have to spend less money out of my millage for regular major and local streets. And I could put more money into the alleys. So I might be able to actually increase that amount into the alley resurfacing CIP I'd like.
Then just my last comment. It's great to hear Commissioner Kozak, this is well done. You see a lot of these. And, uh, you know, certainly want to be as proactive as we can. And I really appreciate your endorsement of it because that means a lot when you're someone of your expertise and experience.
I do want to point out one thing, uh, that I did miss too, and I definitely want to show a level of appreciation, uh, for two, uh, entities. But in gray, uh, if you look at fiscal year twenty five, uh, you'll see CCTV license plate readers. Originally, the city was budgeting for to spend money on license plate readers. But, uh, thankful for the donation of the Gross Point Harper Woods Public Safety Foundation. They donated multiple, um, license plate reader cameras for all the gross points in Harper Woods, which was completed this fiscal year in twenty six. So I do want to thank, uh, them for their contributions. And then also I do want to thank, uh, Dr. Paul Scott. Uh, he donated, uh, personally, uh, monies to replace the theater seating over at the Scott, Scott Theater. So I do want to also thank him too for his generous contributions and to all of our donors in the community. They, uh, we, we are truly in a blessed and amazing community that people are willing to, uh, help us out and see the community thrive.
So that sixty thousand is not for the Akolsky than it was for this Scott. I thought.
That was for the Scott.
So that should probably be moved to FY twenty five, right?
Yes, we are, we are going to have to eventually replace the seats over in the Akolsky. So.
But that gray, that gray field of sixty thousand dollars is not Akolsky. That's Scott?
That was Scott. That was what that was intended for.
So that should bump back to FY twenty five because those dollars have already been spent. That project's complete.
Mm-hmm.
So do we need to then allocate dollars for Akolsky?
We will need to allocate dollars for Akolsky.
But we're not prepared to do that now.
Right now.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
One, one more quick question, more of a funding question and just mechanics of how our taxes work.
Yep.
Are separate dollars collected for, say, Parks and Rec, uh, a tax bill that goes into a separate pool? Or is Parks and Rec funded fully out of the general fund? Like police and fire are, that's all collectively the same essentially?
Yep. So Parks and Recreation, so that is, uh, with one caveat, the Marina is a separate fund. That's an enterprise fund. So that's only by the well holders of Marina. But otherwise, uh, we've got, yes, uh, Patterson Park, Windmill Point Park. Any improvements, wages, fringes, supplies is all funded by the general fund from city tax dollars. Thank you.
Okay. Paul Scott? I, I would just make one last comment. I tackle what others have said. I, I really, I believe that we're doing this. I like that it shows that acquaintance, uh, you know, what's going on and kind of high review. So, uh, as you mentioned, I think when I first joined, it's like four or five years ago, this planning issue, we didn't even have.
Yeah.
So, uh, very good work. Um, that's all I had. And, uh, and not hearing any other comments, I think we can close out that item on the agenda. And then move on to our next piece of new business, which is to set our twenty twenty six meeting dates. Uh, so it's currently that time of year again. Um, so thinking back to what we did for this year, if I recall correctly, um, we, we need a minimum of four meetings.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'll, I'll express my opinion and then you guys can tell me if that, if this a bunch of leave or not. I think we should probably try and target to put six on the agenda or, or on the calendar. Um, and then that way, if for any reason one or two, uh, we don't get, uh, enough business or something, we'll still have four.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I didn't meet the minimum. I think that's what we did last year, is we planned to meet every two, two months.
Okay.
And in terms of the day, um, we started out on Thursday. I think our first couple of meetings were Thursdays. And then there was a conflict with, um, a couple, a couple of members.
Yeah.
Then we moved to Mondays. Um, I'm not sure if that was before around the same time that the school board kind of threw the curve ball and moved their meetings to Mondays.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I guess I'd suggest if we can swing it to not plan on Mondays again, just in. I mean, we could probably work it, but then if people want to go to a city council meeting or a school board meeting, we should probably avoid it on Monday. So, uh, just having said that, I'm pretty open on my schedule for any Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. I, I don't know how you guys feel about it, if you've taken a look at your calendars. And, uh, in terms of cadence, we probably want to start in February.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It's like a February, May, August, November.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'll just throw it out as an idea, but, you know, maybe we do like the third Thursday. You know, unless anyone's got Tuesdays or Wednesdays, uh, so Thursdays are usually pretty open for the city calendars. But I'll defer to your recommendations.
I, I think that's the reason, right? Predominantly had, like, we were going through a lot of the, you know, zoning ordinance, right? Right, you're.
Yeah.
Annual leak areas days, right? Until we moved it over. I would agree it's probably better for us to keep towards the end of the week and not compete with.
Yeah. I'm, so I'm.
Compete on with people's social calendar with.
Yeah.
Where Commissioner Saros's bowling league.
I just want to bring it up.
Um, I can, yeah, I, the first Thursday of each month doesn't work for me. I have a planning commission that I have to go to for, that I can pay that. Uh, so besides that.
Yeah.
Thursday's your thing.
All right. So you suggested third Thursday.
Third Thursday of February, May, August, November.
All right. I'm good with that.
Do we want to put six on the calendar though, to know that we could cancel them or no?
Yeah, that was sort of my suggestion.
Does that every other month then? Does that end up being February, April, June, or I mean?
Yeah, I got it. February, April, June, August, October, December, next year, six.
So are we. Setting ourselves under the failure of June meetings and August meetings or what?
But I mean, in all likelihood, right, probably be similar to what we've done on the calendar. If we're going to cancel two meetings here, right, the last two, so I. And we, we've, we've always moved that Friday as the other, as the other alternative, right, to find other dates. So I would, I would prefer, to your point, to schedule six and scale back and move them and give ourselves some flexibility. Versus we get to the end of the year and then we're scrambling, right, to.
Yeah. Okay. So I don't have a calendar, Friday, the third Thursday of February, I'm guessing it's like the nineteenth-ish.
Yeah, that'd be the nineteenth.
Okay.
It'd be February nineteenth.
A- April third Thursday would be taxi.
It's probably sixteen.
Sixteen.
Maybe the sixteenth.
Maybe. Well, I'm thinking June, April, May, June.
Yeah, February, February, April, June, August, October, December.
June eighteenth.
Very good.
June eighteenth, right?
And August, it would be.
Twentieth?
Twentieth.
Yeah.
Nineteenth.
October.
October, sorry.
Fifteenth.
On the calendar, September seventeenth, that's six.
Yeah.
Six p.m. per se?
Cool. Oh, no, I think that's.
Oh, six p.m.
Yeah.
And do we, uh, we should, we should discuss the time too. I know noting the minutes here, there was, the planning commission meeting was at five thirty. Uh, was there, I don't know if there was a specific, uh, that's what everybody's scheduled could fit better? Or do you want to do seven o'clock like this meeting?
I personally prefer seven because I'm driving in from Southfield between nine and nine. So.
Seven, definitely. It's like seven to five thirty. It's a, it's a little close.
Okay. All right. So seven p.m. of this. All right. So you'll just throw those on the list.
Yeah.
All right. Good enough. And like you said, we, throughout the year, there's flexibility if, if things come out. So. All right. Um, those are the only two pieces of new business I see on the agenda. So that would take us to, um, the frequently the highlight of any meeting adjournment. Um, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Tell me.
Okay. All right. We have a motion. It's not going to anyone who, uh, would like to adjourn the meeting. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone proposed? All right. So we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.